Good evening. The City of PBD zoning board of appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40A and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be heard in the following manner. The secretary, Mr. Sensabaugh, will read the legal notice or state that such notice has been waived. All applications tonight will be heard in the order they were received in the city clerk's office or as otherwise designated by the chair. The petitioner, which are you, or petitioner's representative, which would mean your lawyer or your builder or your translator, will present the subject application to the board. The chair may limit the length of all remarks. I'm going to stop right there and just explain that a bit. So when you come up to the podium, you will state your name and address for the record. You will then state why you're here. You're here for dimensional relief. You want to put on a garage to your house, but you don't have the exact footage that you need, so you came here for a variance. And then you have to tell us why you want this garage or whatever. Certain things we really don't need to hear, such as how long you've lived in the city. We're all proud that we live in the city. We don't really need to know what you do for a living. We do not need to... Really? We do not also need to know what lousy neighbors you have and what they do that aggravates you. The best and the most productive variances that go through are the ones where you have already spoken to your neighbors, showed them your plans, and if they have a problem You can fix that before you get here this evening. At that point in time, the board will ask you some questions. And then I will say, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor? And then I will say, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? Usually, we have one or two people that will come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll say they have no trouble with you building a deck in your backyard. And that's wonderful. We do, it doesn't look like tonight, but you never know, we have many people that will speak in opposition. Once again, if you are here to speak in opposition to whatever your neighbor is doing, you have to stick to the facts, why exactly you are opposed. And there are many good reasons. I mean, we had one instance where somebody wanted to build an addition that was right on the property line. You know, that's asking for a lot, and the neighbor didn't like it, and they gave good reasons. Which brings another fact where everything that you bring to us cannot be approved and not everything is denied. If everything was approved, you would not need the zoning board of appeals. What I try to do is I try to make sure that when you're speaking, you just stick to clear and concise facts. No mumbo jumbo about neighborhood stuff. Keep to the subject. You're here for dimensional relief. Once you are done speaking and you go back to your seat, please don't, I say this every month, and every month it happens, you forget that you said something you wanted to say and you shout it out from your seat. We don't allow any shouting from your seat. If this place was filled and I knew that we would have lots of people come up to the podium, I would then tell you, and I'll say it anyways, if you keep rambling on and on and on, I'll give you one of these, and that just means, you know, we really don't want to be here till midnight. Stick to the subject. At the end of that, we can ask you some more questions or you can come back up to the podium and answer questions or explain why maybe your neighbors had some opposition. At the end of the whole thing, we take a vote. The decision then is typed and filed with the city clerk. Once the decision is filed with the city clerk, you have a 20-day appeal period. You can't do anything for 20 days. And our marvelous clerk will explain all of that to you when the decision is final. In compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is also being recorded by our clerk. When you're at the microphone, please speak directly into it. And once again, only speak when you are at the microphone so everything can be recorded for the record. So this evening, we are starting with number one, which is a continued application of Circle Storage LLC, and that is Mr. Kelty.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I practice law at 40 Lowell Street here in PBD, Massachusetts. I appear this evening on behalf of Circle Storage LLC. Circle Storage has asked for a variance from the provisions of City PBD zoning ordinance to allow a piece of their property to be carved out and essentially given to Frederick Peterson. Mr. Peterson and his family have occupied the premises for well over 20 years. It would seem there is evidence that the occupation has been ongoing since at least 1981. One of the predecessors in title occupied the land during the '70s, Gust Luongo, and he had actually occupied this piece of land. And it shows on the assessor's map as a piece of the property that is fenced. I gave you copies of a plan that would show the hopeful development of the property, which is a byright use. It shows that the larger of the buildings that is not yet constructed but will be constructed at some future date, that the fence line that is shown on the assessor's information also shows on this map. And we've called out that we are now, once we carve this piece out from the Circle Storage land mass, they will be located 33 feet, the building will be located 33 feet from the property line. And that's the relief that I've requested, which is side yard of 33 feet rather than the 50 feet that is required. And I've given you copies, the front and last page of an agreement. I do have the last page signed by Ralph Caruso, and that agreement demonstrates what the issue is that we're trying to address. The question had come about as to why I showed buildings on the Circle Storage land which are not there yet. It is because that's the area that will be impacted, and that's the area that I've called out as requiring a variance. And I've given you the front page of the agreement, which demonstrates that Peterson has indeed occupied the property for over 20 years. Mr. Panos represents the Petersons. He's happy to supplement any, you know, any questions that you may have with respect to the agreement or the variance request. But I think we've given you background that demonstrates why we're here. We have not created this hardship. It's not self-inflicted. But instead, we are faced with an actuality where property owned by Circle Storage has actually been occupied for an excess of 20 years by the Peterson use of the land. And with that, if you would like to hear from Jason, I would turn it over to him.
Now, I have a question for you. So back to the, just for clarity, to the buildings and the parking spaces that you drew in here or somebody drew in. It's not, if they're not actually here at this point in time, this rendering of these buildings could change. I mean, what is this? Is this like maybe, perhaps?
This is actually a plan that has been taken through construction review and site plan review, and it's now being modified slightly with respect to its drainage to accommodate this particular carve-out that we're talking about tonight. So I gave you the approved site plan so that you could see the impact of the carve-out on the parcel of land, which is approximately, which is approximately 14 acres, 8 acres, I But those buildings have been through site plan review.
So Attorney Kelty, obviously, we appreciate supplying us the agreement or at least portions of that, and we appreciate Attorney Panos being here on this. And it's certainly not an indictment on either attorney. But we have made it a position, as was happening too frequently in the past, that of receiving things night of, and then our inability to really truly review them prior to this or make them available to the public prior to our actual hearing. So we've received the agreement tonight. We appreciate that. But it does raise a possible issue for us where we don't want to be setting a precedent again, where we're suddenly accepting documents and part of the record on the night of the hearing. It certainly doesn't preclude you from moving forward tonight. Obviously, we'll hear Attorney Panos's representations on it, and we could move forward based upon that. But just to be clear on that there, how we are moving forward with this, that we may not be able to accept this agreement as necessarily part of this petition. We can hear Attorney Panos's statements, and then a decision can be made whether you want to move forward based upon that or if you want to submit the entirety of the agreement as part of a subsequent, not subsequent, as part of a petition for next month. But I just wanted to put that out there. We'll leave that up to you, but just want to throw that out there.
My name is Jason Panos, practicing law at 246 Andover Street, PBD, Massachusetts. I represent the adjacent property owner in front of the locust subject parcel at 114 Newberry Street. His name is Frederick Peterson. He's owned that property since, I believe, 1981. And to start, we are in support of this petition. The portions of the agreement were provided to you as evidence to demonstrate that we have, in fact, settled a longstanding dispute regarding portions of the Circle Storage property that Mr. Peterson and his predecessors and interests have occupied for well over 20 years. And rather than pursue what we thought was a fairly substantial and strong adverse possession claim, which, as you know, is costly and time-consuming, we came to an agreement that Circle Storage would convey in settlement of any of those disputes, a portion of the property so that we could avoid that litigation in going forward. And Mr. Peterson's happy, and Circle Storage seems to be happy, and they, I think, have come to the realization of, you know, what they were facing with what I believe was an uphill battle for them to overcome. And rather than go through all of that, we kind of cut to the chase and settled. And that's what the portions of the agreement illustrate today, that were provided to you today.
Just through the chair. Attorney Panos, the, without disclosing anything, it's attorney-client privilege.
Sure.
Did the, did your client retain you before or after this petition was filed?
Before, well before.
Okay, thank you.
And to give you a little background through the chair, this is the fourth time that Mr. Peterson has attempted settlement, foregoing his adverse possession claim rights. So he's been anxious. This is as close as he has gotten to resolving this issue, which has been longstanding. And the more longstanding, the more it persisted, the more adverse, obviously, it gets. And so everybody's really happy to put this chapter aside, and the property being conveyed to him does not really allows him to maintain his business, his auto body shop, where it's been, it doesn't really interrupt his business activities there. And as I said, everybody's pretty satisfied and happy with the outcome.
Through the chair. Attorney Panos.
Yes.
I appreciate your being here, and I do feel like hearing testimony from both Attorney Kelty and Attorney Panos tonight is helpful. I don't know that we can consider the agreement that was presented to us tonight. However, you know, I do think we can consider, you know, your side of the story and Attorney Kelty's side of the story. I guess I would ask, because I was told or the board was told, was made, represented to the board last month, that there were aerials and there was other, you know, there was evidence out there that there was this real adverse possession claim. And you're saying that there's, you know, a strong claim, and it's an uphill battle for the other side. Can you get into that a little bit in terms of the history, just so that we can appreciate that and perhaps have something more to vote on other than just what we're being told?
So the area in dispute had been surveyed. And when I looked at this, and I've done some adverse possession work, when I looked at this in the context of that adverse possession precedence and litigation, I came to the immediate conclusion that this was among the strongest cases I had ever seen, that typically you would prove an adverse possession claim through serious affidavits, going back, hiring engineers, spending a lot of money, proving out through aerial photography and so forth, that you, in fact, have adversely possessed a disputed area. All of that existed. Both parties had that documentation in front of them. As a matter of fact, some of the earlier iterations of the plan, the development plans that I saw showed very faintly the outline of the fenced-in portion of the disputed area, which is kind of a inverse arc, you know, around the Peterson property and is fenced in. And that fence has existed for a very long time. Mr. Peterson provided me an aerial photograph that dates back easily to the late '70s that shows the fence line then where it is today. So we were all convinced that it existed. The petitioner here tonight understood very quickly that the issue existed, and they want to develop a piece of property. And we want to, and our interest in this is to make sure that this matter is settled once and for all. You'll also recall that the subject property that is the subject of their development has been before this board several times over the past few years. Different property owners, foreclosures, lots of controversy, and I think this is an opportunity for all of us to put this property in its future to rest once and for all, that we can finally stabilize the property and move forward, and we can end up without this albatross over our neck, which is, do we own it? Don't we own it? And we, of course, were convinced that we do. I was hired to Attorney's Lotus's question to pursue the adverse possession claim. That's what my client's mandate to me was. And I convinced him that that was not a good idea, if we could come to a mutually agreeable settlement, as we ended up with. And whether you accept that or not, as part of your record tonight, all it illustrates is that we have, in fact, come to an agreement in settlement of a claim that both sides agree exists.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
If you'd like, through the chair, this is the disputed area that's existed since the late '70s. And you can have that, that pretty much shows the area as it existed then as it exists today, just pictorially. And again, these things are all illustrative of what I'm saying.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none, the matter is before the board.
Make a motion to close the public hearing. And before we put it to a vote, you want to proceed without the agreement in place?
Sure.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the petition.
Thank you, members.
Thank you very much.
And as a side note, don't pass anything in, again, the night of whatever we're hearing. At this time, Mr. Colbert will have debate rights and Mr. Osborne will have his voting rights.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of PBD will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 17th at 7:00 p.m. at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, on the application of Brian Cooper, 185 Winona Street, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019, as amended Section 7.2, as it applies to the premises known as 185 Winona Street, PBD, map 55, lot 4. This petitioner seeks a variance and requires relief to the left-side yard setback where 20 feet are required and 9 and 1/2 feet are proposed, or 9.5 feet are proposed. Property is located in R1 zoning district. Application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the city clerk's office and board of appeals office, city hall, in advance and just prior to the public hearing.
Good evening. Brian Cooper, 185 Winona Street. I am here in petition for a variance to add my deck to attach to my pool. It is, I need 20, the zoning board is 20, the zoning law is 20 feet, and my pool is 9 and 1/2 feet, so that's what the variance is for. I have spoken with all my neighbors. I do have a letter here from my neighbor at 189 Winona Street, who it directly affects, and she is in favor. All my neighbors are okay with it, so that's it.
Did you just get that tonight, that letter?
No.
No, 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 I mean, you have it, right?
No, I didn't know that I had the...
You want to read it?
Sure. It says, "To whom it may concern, I'm a neighbor of Christina and Brian residing at 189 Winona Street in PBD. I would like to state that I have reviewed the plot plan as well as the proposed deck design and location. I have no problems with the placement of their deck attaching to the pool. It in no way impedes on my property. Please use this letter to serve as a statement of consent and support." And she signed it, so that's...
I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
So you want to build the deck from the pool to attach it to the house?
So if you look at the plot plan, there is, it's actually a two-level deck. There's one, that 28-foot one, which was an existing deck that we replaced. And the second piece, that bottom one, is a second lower deck to attach to the pool.
That second deck, is there anything there now?
No. Well, just the frame. The building inspector approved the frame up to six feet within the pool, so that's what's there now. But there is no, there was nothing there previous.
So I don't have a pool, so I'm going to ask you, so isn't there supposed to be a fence around this pool or something?
It has to be locked gates, according to the...
Above ground.
Yeah, it's an above-ground pool, not a below...
You have like fencing or whatever you call that?
So when the, once, previous to this, I had a ladder that was a locking sliding ladder, and I have a two-year-old and trying to get a two-year-old into or use the pool with kids of that, so that's why we're extending the deck.
Okay, so, all right, so here you go. So the deck, the second deck...
Yeah.
Is what you want to build? And that's going to go from your house to that pool?
Yes, correct.
And it's going to be, you said it's a second deck lower?
Yeah, so there's, the first deck's eight and 1/2 feet in the air, the second deck is...
And that's going to go from your house right to the pool?
Yes, with locking gates on each side of...
There you go. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, yeah, so there's locking gates with alarms on each side. So one, there'll be a set of stairs that comes from the top deck that goes to the bottom, and then there's a locking gate with alarm. And then on the other side, there'll be a set of stairs, and there'll also be a locking gate with alarm on it.
And you want this because why? The hardship is that it was too difficult for you to bring your daughter up the ladder?
Yeah, to try to use the pool with two kids, and yes.
So just for a point of reference.
Yes.
That's really not a hardship? That's an inconvenience?
Okay.
I get it.
Yep.
I do, I get it, and I'm sure it will be easier and it would look nice. But just so you know.
Okay, thank you.
Questions in the audience? People that want to speak in favor of the deck? In opposition? Hearing none, the matter is before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Vote, please.
Yes.
Make sure you have those gates locked. Three, Jose Dos Santos.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of PBD will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 17th, 7:00 p.m. at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, on the application of Jose Dos Santos, 3 Berry Place, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019, as amended Section 7.2, as it applies to the premises known as 3 Berry Place, PBD, map 75, lot 197D. Petitioner seeks a variance and requires relief to the right-side yard setback where 10 feet are required and 2.4 feet are proposed. Property is located in R2 zoning district. Application and plot plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the city clerk's office and board of appeals office, city hall, in advance and just prior to the public hearing.
My name is Jose Santos. I live in 3 Berry Place. She's my translator.
I'm just like, my name is Roberta Braven. I'm just here as a friend to help him with the translator.
Somebody has to tell us why he's here and why he wants this and what's going on.
Sure. Jose bought a house recently, and it was existing addition on the right side of the house. And he was just thinking of, you know, renovator without knowing it was existing building there, and he looked to change the roof because the rain tail, it was going like towards his neighbor. And thinking about like just taking that away from the neighbor, he wants to... He wants to put the roof higher. He kind of thought about it, just like renovate the building. But he took it away, the wall, in order to make it higher. But the footage, you know, it was not enough, unfortunately. But again, it was an existing building there.
Did he build this without a building permit?
He did not. He started and then the builder came. And then he was like asking, well, the big...
Which was built before, before, does he have a building permit now?
Do you have, is that the building permit now? He's still waiting for his permit.
Ask a couple of questions. So he had an existing, what do we call this, a shed? Like a mudroom?
Yeah, it was bigger than the shed. It was like a more mudroom.
Okay, and he tore it down?
He did.
He tore it down and then he rebuilt it?
Well, not, he didn't tore it down completed. But he tore it down like one of the walls because in order to change...
But it looks, it looks like, it looks totally different. So we really need to know. He might have not torn it down altogether one day, but in reality, he tore most of it down and rebuilt it. It looks like he even put a new foundation on the ground.
Make that stronger.
Yeah, he had to do that to make it stronger because what he did with the roof, it was like a request from him.
So he changed the roof line? And it looks like this is a little larger? And he made a foundation all without a building permit? Is that correct? Is that yes?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay. I know I'm going to go against my own rules. May I ask what he does for work?
He's a landscaper.
Okay, so he's not a builder? He's not a contractor? He doesn't build houses or things like that?
He's not. He was just a, yeah, a landscaper.
Is this structure now what we're looking at on page 1? So you have the roof, you have the walls, you have the foundation, you have the doors. It's really just about totally built?
I'm sorry, it just looks like a new build, you say?
So you have the foundation, you have all the walls, you have the roof, you have the doors. It's basically all built?
It's right.
So you changed, you actually, so you changed, you changed the building? You made the building? You changed the way the building looks?
So, so...
Yeah, it wasn't a change like on the size of the room or anything. But yeah, it was a change on the roof. Because what he did...
Well, the foundation, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, in order to make the roof, in order to switch, you know, to the side, I don't know if I'm explaining right. But the roof, it was like the tail was on the side. He just making on then both side, from the front and the back of the house. But in order to do that, he had to then make the walls stronger in order to support the roof.
Right, so, but there was a change in the way it looks?
Because of the roof, yeah.
Well, yeah, because, yeah, okay.
Through the chair, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm very confused, all right? The cement work that they did, the foundation, is it the same dimensions as the existing foundations that were there before you did anything? Did you just reinforce the foundation that was there? Did you remove it and build a larger foundation?
Yeah, he just kept the foundations on the same location, but he removed the wall and he made the foundation deeper. The pillars, he did it pillars. So, yeah, he removed the wall.
That's fine. Is the foundation the same size?
The same size, but then it's deeper now.
Why are they here? It's the front and back, it's the same. Violations to the zoning ordinance. Do you, through the chair, did you know when this addition was built? Did you buy the house with this addition? Or did you add the addition?
He didn't know when was the addition was made. He bought the house with the addition.
How did it sell if it's a violation? There must have been a variance, or else it wouldn't have been able to sell the house.
What's on that, or how could they sell the house? Was there a variance on, because it's so close to the property line? There was no variance ever issued?
It's pre-existing non-conforming.
I guess my confusion is if they, they didn't change the footprint of it. I mean, I know they knocked the wall down and increased the size of the depth of the footings. But if they didn't change the footprint, does that require a variance? So because they, because they dropped the footings down an extra whatever, and they changed the roof? So you don't think change, doesn't matter? Footprint stays the same, they can't change anything?
Without coming forward.
With coming forward first?
Exactly.
Okay.
Let's see if we're correct on this. You kept the same actual dimension of the foundation. You dug deeper to make it stronger. Instead of the roof being this way, you made it this way?
This size for go my neighbor, you know? And I changed like this for the water goes, my problem, you know?
Yeah, the... Okay, so, so, so the roof was like this and the water went in your neighbors. Now it goes this, so now it goes on your land. But the whole roof and the whole square amount of the thing, building stayed exactly the same.
Same, exactly.
Are you positive?
Yeah, same, exactly, same.
Same, exact?
Same, yep.
It looks different just because the roof. It was actually, the roof, it was only one side. And now he made it two sides because going back in front of the house.
So did you make the roof higher or lower or kept it the same height?
He kept the same height, you know, like the roof on the height side, he kept that same height.
So we're going to ask if there's anybody in the audience here. But just, please make sure he realizes that anything you, even if you want to build something inside your house, you need to come to the building inspector first.
Yes, sorry.
Any other questions here? Any, Barry, are you okay? Any in the audience in favor? Anybody opposed? Do we have a...
Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to approve?
Ball vote, please.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, 83 Pine.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 17th, 7:00 p.m. at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Covenant Christian Academy, care of Attorney John Kelty, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019, as amended Section 7.2, as it applies to the premises known as 83 Pine Street, Peabody, map 45, lots 504A. Petitioner seeks a variance and requires relief to the right-side yard where 15 feet are required and 3.9 feet are proposed in lock coverage where 35% is allowed and 37.5% is proposed. This property is located in our 4 zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals' Office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing. We don't need to do that one again. We'll just call them up when they come up. All right. Number four, 3 Victor Circle. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 17th, 7:00 p.m. at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Maria O'Toole, 3 Victor Circle for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019, as amended Section 7.2, as it applies to the premises known as 3 Victor Circle, Peabody, map 75, lot 86A. Petitioner seeks a variance and requires relief to the side-yard setback where 10 feet are required and 5.9 feet are proposed. Property is located in our 2 zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals' Office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Maria V. O'Toole. I reside at 3 Victor Circle here in Peabody. I'm here with my other half, Said Ayati. I seek relief to the right side of my yard to build a new deck. A replacement of a 19-and-1/2-year-old, dilapidated, unsafe, and worn deck. Before the work was started and after signing a contract with Diego Martins of Apex Carpentry of Swamscott, Massachusetts, the contractor applied for a permit here at City Hall. He was then told to come back the next day for pickup. Because the weather was permitting, permitting with us, no rain, he started the framing and the demo of the old deck. Not that it was a lot to take down. It was, as it was, already dilapidated and unsafe. He then went back to City Hall the next morning to pick up the permit and was asked for a plot plan. He called me. Surprisingly, I gave him the one I had. He took it back to City Hall and was told it was too old. We needed a new one from a surveyor. I asked why, as nothing has changed in 19-and-1/2 years. However, we did as we requested. Got the surveyor, got a new plot plan. Based on that new one, more, much more detailed than 19-and-1/2 years ago, we need a variance. Thus, the reason why we are here tonight. After speaking with the property owner, Frank Sibelli, who abuts my property, he has no opposition or objection to the replacement and the new deck that I request. My request for a new deck, other than it is old, rotted, 19-and-1/2 years old, it is a place where my 91-year-old mother, who resides with us, can sit, see the birds, the squirrels, and be content with just sitting outside. I respectfully request and ask for your permission to grant my request for a new deck at 3 Victor Circle. Thank you.
Through the chair. So this deck, is it, it's on, it's the same size as the pre-existing deck?
The deck that was back there, the old one, it was four, four feet by 20 feet. But it was not usable, not a usable space. So based on what we're looking at, we decided to add extra footage to it. So now we went to 8 feet by 20. And that's what it is right now.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So really, it's 8 feet by 19, 4?
Yes.
And you said that the old deck was there for 19 years?
Yes, 19 and 1/2.
And you never used it?
We did.
Okay, because you just said it was not usable.
Not a usable space. In other words, you know, you can, you cannot sit out there and have breakfast. You could not.
So it was used for what, for 19 years?
Just basically an egress.
Okay.
Through the chair. I'll just make a comment that this is, I see at least, satisfies the hardship element of a variance where we look at the shape and topography of the land. And you have here, I'll just hold it up, but basically you've got this lot at the end of a cul-de-sac that's very narrow in nature. I don't see a problem with this. And in fact, in the, in the application, it explains that how the lot narrows to the front and to the rear of the property. It explains why, you know, this is really a hardship. Not so much, you know, how old somebody is or why they need it because of a physical handicap or, you know, you feel bad for people. It sounds like, you know, that would be the hardship. But this is, this is a prime example of hardship met, in my, in my opinion. So I just point that out to the, to the board and to the audience.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition, hearing none, the matter is before...
Motion to close the public hearing? Motion to approve?
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you're all set. So now we're at 83 Pine, which was already red, which is Christian Covenant Academy.
I have two chocks that, one is the plan of land. And I just, it should be set up to be seen that way or this way?
Any audience in favor or in opposition of this?
No. Okay.
Good evening, my name is John Kelty, I'm an attorney, I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts. I appear this evening on behalf of Covenant Christian Academy, Inc., who is located at 83 Pine Street in Peabody, Massachusetts, and they're located in Ward 6, and they are in a zoning district which is R4. This property is formerly the John F. Kennedy Junior High School. Prior to that, it was the West Peabody Speedway, showing age now. And the reason we're here this evening is Covenant Christian would like to build a gymnasium that would extend toward the sideline of the property, and we are asking for lot coverage of thirty-seven and a half percent rather than thirty-five percent, and we're adding, we're asking also for side yard of 3.9 feet rather than 15 feet. Those are the two variances we've asked for, and I'd like to take a moment to show you what triggers. It is the shape of our lot that triggers the need for that 3.9-foot variance, and- of our lot, and we believe that we fulfill the requirements for hardship, we've set that out in our application, and we would ask, if you, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them, but I think I've given you a pretty good idea of what we're, what we're requesting, what we're proposing to build, and how.
Through the chair. Attorney Kelty, it looks like from the plan that was submitted along with the application that you're going to be losing a number of parking spaces?
Yes.
Does that, loss of parking spaces necessitate any variance for-
No, will not.
Could you just inform us as to what the required parking is? Do you know the number of parking spaces that are there?
That is required for the educational use?
Yes.
There has not been one that has been suggested by the building department, but I do know that we would be exempted from certain aspects of the parking requirement because of our educational use. We have agreed that the dimensional relief that we're seeking is necessary to be gotten from this zoning board, we could not avoid coming to this board, but with respect to parking issues, if we're asked how many parking spaces we're gonna have, we will, we will reveal that to, there are no actual assigned spaces to the condominium units that are within there. It's generalized parking. For instance, if I go there on a Saturday for soccer games, I can park virtually anywhere on that property. So it's kind of shared parking by somewhat the city and public in general, and the people that utilize these residences. The children at the school don't have cars, so we have, we have automobiles, we have parking for our employees, but not at all for the students.
Do you know if there's any plans in the works to make up for some of the spaces that are being lost, or is there just gonna be a decrease in the amount of spaces available?
It'll be a decrease in the amount of spaces available because there, the rest of the property is owned by either the City of Peabody Parks and Recreation, or is owned by, or has conservation owned by the City of Peabody, but has conservation land on it. So I don't see room for expansion at all.
Any in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? No other questions here?
Motion to close the public hearing. Motion to approve.
Vote please.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you, members, thank you.
And Nine Bourbon Street.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 17th, 7:00 PM, at the Wigan Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Nine Bourbon LLC Care of Josh Goldstein, Nine Bourbon Street, for a modification variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7.2 and 9.2, as it applies to the premises known as Nine Bourbon Street, Peabody, map 36 lot 19. Petitioner seeks to modify variance to allow for 34 parking spaces where 38 were previously granted and 40 spaces are required. Side yard setback to allow for 21 feet where 40 feet are required. Front yard to allow for 16 feet where 50 feet are required. Rear yard to allow for 7 feet where 50 feet are required. This property is located in a VR zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals Office of the Hall in advance and prior to the public hearing.
How are you, ladies and gentlemen? Thank you, my name's Josh Goldstein from Nine Bourbon Street. We're-
Oops, mine's-
Thank you. Hi, sorry about that. So we're here tonight seeking a variance for parking, it was a actual variance that was granted previously for 38 parking spots, and we're looking to reduce down to 34 spots. The building is gonna have a small little bump out of about 300 square feet to make more of a dramatic design and a nicer look to the building, and we're just looking to increase that space a little, and that's gonna decrease the parking by four spots.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
So, I think I remember this, not I think, I do remember this. The back of the property, there's a hill? Is there a dumpster there?
So, the back of the property, we bought the, so we bought the land in, back in, in March, so we bought the property, there's buildings, there's condo buildings in the back. Yep, so there's no dumpster back there now.
So is this the, what color is your building?
So, right now, it's just the foundation and the ground. So there's just the foundation, behind it is Ledgewood Estates, and then behind that is the ice skating rink.
Okay, and this, this did come before us, and they were going to clean up the whole area, and they were going to plant trees, and then nothing happened, and you came along and you bought that, this piece of property?
That is correct.
And you're going to clean it up and plant trees and make everything look pretty?
We're gonna do everything to make it pretty as quick as possible.
And what exactly is going here?
So it's gonna be a 10,000 square foot office building, it's gonna be an orthodontist on the first floor, and then my office on the second floor.
Just through the chair, the architectural design you have here shows the landscaping, is that just to make it look pretty, or is that the actual landscaping you're going to put up?
So that's just to make it look pretty for now, but we are gonna hire an architectural person to do the landscape design and make sure that does look good. Obviously, with everything going on in Bourbon Street and all of the, in the game center, we wanna make a very appealing complex.
Okay, just for, you know, your purposes, there is landscaping, we are landscaping requirements.
In the, in the back, all the trees.
Yep, so I, I don't, was that part of this application? I don't think it was.
I don't think the landscaping-
So you would have to just, in order to be compliant with this application, this petition, you would need to meet all zoning landscaping requirements. If you don't, you'd have to come back before us to do less than what we require.
Sure, yep, that's what I was told, that there was, have to be 10 trees planted in the back of the building and follow everything.
That was my only thing.
Did any, did you talk to any neighbors?
Um, I have not talked to any neighbors.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? Oh, come on now, I know you're dying to speak. In opposition, hearing none, the matters before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing. Motion to approve.
Second.
Call though, please.
Yes.
Set, yes.
Thank you very much, guys, have a nice evening.
Approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we're all set. Thank you, everybody. Yep.